Okay, sorry, I apologize for being late. We had a lot of things to discuss upstairs. So, at this time, I recall to order the Michael Center School District Board of Education meeting Tuesday, January 10, 2017. Mr. Director of the Fledges, both Board members are present with exceptional Clark Osborn, who will not be here today, and Marlee, Howard Lloyd do expect to be here. Also pursuant to a policy which I have been having done in the past is these meetings are videotaped. The school district videotaped the meetings and they are available on the website somewhere, under Board of Education on the website. So all the meetings from, I guess, from July when we started videotaping. Okay? So, thank you, Angela. All right, if we could all please stand for the Fledges Legion.
Fledges Legion.
United States of America, consider Republic, religious stance, one nation, under God, individual, the liberty and justice of the world.
Okay, straight report. Welcome.
Happy New Year, and I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season. Tomorrow and every Wednesday of the month, there will be a cultural expo called VR Suffer. This is a student-driven event where the school will be highlighting different aspects of world cultures, and students will share their own culture as well. This past Saturday, the high school hosted the Women in Sports Month, where athletic teams highlighted Spanish and local women in sports. Alumnas and current members were present. The 12th annual handball tournament is currently going on during lunch this week and after. On Friday, there will be two assemblies given by Alan Boston, 91-year-old liberator of the concentration camp. This event is sponsored by RCC's Holocaust Museum and is part of the VR Suffer cultural expo. On Wednesday, January 18, there will be a panel on college admissions in the high school auditorium from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. This is an event mainly for sophomore and junior parents to visit the guidance department and discuss about the college process. There will be an S and P exam administered on Saturday, January 21st. On January 24, Suffering High School will be hosting an eighth-grade parent orientation in the auditorium from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. From January 24 to 27, Regent's influence will also be administered. On Thursday, February 2, there will be the Third Winter Concert from 7:30 to 9:30 p.m. at the high school auditorium, in the high school auditorium, and the Second Winter Concert to take off that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is pretty intense, isn't it? Thank you. Just in case you didn't know, my shirt was from Saturday. I was able to get the ball in between two cones. Of course, the six-year-old did it also. Whatever. Okay, I apologize. Anyway, we expect to 1.08 minutes of the regular meeting. We do not have a forum present to approve those minutes when Marlee shows up, so I'll just kind of skip it for now if that's okay with everybody, and then if she shows up, we'll take a vote on that to reset the line or not present actually. So, if we can then skip to 1.09, Angela Tewson. 1.09, she put her comments.
Well, just to reinforce what Irene said about women in sports, my wife and I had an opportunity to watch the girls' basketball teams, freshman JV and varsity, play on Saturday against North Rockland, and unfortunately, we didn't prevail, but our varsity girls' team, they really made a valiant effort. They were down by double digits almost the entire game, and then closed within two, three points, had ball, didn't quite make it, but North Rockland, they've got some big kids over there. The girls were all like 6'8" or 6'10". I think Abby Bosco was trying to dribble between their legs and stuff like that. We had a good turnout, the girls' cheerleaders were there, and we have a competitive team with our cheerleaders, which I think is fantastic, first time in a long time, and just a lot of sports going on. Been able to see our great wrestlers go at it, swim team, boys' basketball. Haven't seen the Tracksters yet, but I mean in the armory in the next couple of weeks, I think. A lot of activities going on, and the fine arts before the holidays. Over at the Palisades Mall, we had the handball choir, we had the choir, we had the band there. They were amazing, and whenever somebody would walk by and say, "What school is that?" I'd say, "That's Suffering High School, especially the high school in Rockland County, if not New York State." "Come to our school, come to our school." But a lot of great activities. I did miss the concert last night, but I know we have a couple more coming up in the next month, and it's gotta be great to be a kid at Suffering High School. Got so much to do, so much fun.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, public participation, 1.01. Public participation as for action items only, those are items 2.01 through 2.11. Discussion will last for 30 minutes. If you have any comments with respect to the action items only, you're up here. Please step up to the podium, state your name, school affiliation, address your marks to the board. It is not a question and answer, although we are listening, so if you have any comments you will leave that would be, probably will get back to you, somebody will get back to you after the meeting. And also pursuant to policy, 12:30 through 200, 30 to 40, just refraining from speaking with respect to any particular students or employee of the district. Okay, seeing none? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Okay, thank you. With respect to action items, 1, 2.01 to 2.11, I haven't been asked to pull any.
I'm gonna have to pull one, I'm sorry.
Okay, which one?
2.01.
2.01? Okay, we'll pull 2.01. You can send the gen for 2.02 through 2.11. Chair makes the motion to accept those as stated.
No move.
Second.
Craig, Teresa. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. 2.01, chair makes the motion to accept 2.01 as stated.
No move.
Craig, Teresa.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion? Okay. Any discussion?
It's exactly the same.
Any second?
No.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Propose, sentence?
I abstain.
All right, administrative reports, 3.01. We have the mid-year, kind of due to report, Teresa, so thank you very much. Can you get this on there, could you?
I hope.
We're all waiting.
Okay, this is basically, like it says, a mid-year report through December, but I caution you when you're looking at this, that the major expenditures are really over 10 months, September through June. So even though this is a six-month report, which of course is half a year, you're still gonna not see 50% numbers in expenditures or revenues because it really does not encompass five of the most important months, we only have four. So you're gonna have smaller numbers than you might anticipate in a regular company that really works over the 12 months. So, in general, I'm just gonna go through this, I'm not going through this line by line, but just to show you, 15, 16, and 16, 17 as a percentage of property taxes and all our different major revenue accounts, they're basically around the same percentage. The only thing that's a little bit different, a couple of things to point out, is health services, we're still waiting for some payments from that for this year. The other thing is state aid, it looks a little bit less because our teacher's retirement was actually less, and how the system works is instead of us paying a bill for teacher's retirement, they actually take away part of our aid. So we make an entry to show that, and that's the teacher's retirement's less this year, about that $500,000 that were less, and that's the difference there. The expenditures also are basically on target from year to year. The only differences I would point out is BOCs is much larger this year, and that's because of a lot of technology that we're taking care of this year. Obviously, we're doing a lot of things in this district, and that's where the major expense is. And the only other real area that's large, you can see the buildings and grounds is spent much of their budget. That's because we have a lot of major projects going on the last couple of years, including one of the doors and locks that you see in all the buildings. In the other section, the big difference there, several hundred thousand dollars, and that's a lot of equipment. We're buying some classrooms, we just made a board transfer tonight to spend some money for equipment. We had some legal expenses, we had some retirement, we had a major principal retire in September, that's a big number, and just, you know, here, I assume there's nothing major. But as you can see, if you look at the bottom, budget to budget expenditures, we're pretty much on target, nothing different. And again, I say that it's four months of the major 10 months, so it's not gonna show up 50%, they never will see that.
The purpose of the report for us internally is if you look at the top, the top's the revenue, and the 10th line down, 11th line down, total revenue. So we look at 15, 16, and to this point in time, we have received 83.95% of the revenue. This year, 83.11%. So if we're within about 2, 1 and 1/2 to 2% on both the revenue side and the expenditure side, you know, we, that's our starting point. If it's more than 2%, then that raises a red flag to us, and then we start to really dig into it deeper. Teresa just talked about that. On the expenditures part, if we look down towards the bottom, 38.61 to 39.93, so we're off about 1.3%, which still isn't that bad, but as Teresa pointed out, the buildings and grounds is up, BOCs expense is up significantly than in years past. We budgeted for most of it, so the percentage is not off by a lot, but it forces us to look at each of these lines and say, "Okay, what's the issue?" Utilities as a percentage is, you know, 5%, but as a dollar amount, it's not too bad. So, that's kind of what we look at as our mid-year report. How are we? Are we within 2% of where we've been budgeted, revenue and expenditures? And then we dig into the individual funds to see if there's, there are any major issues. So something that we did not share last year, because last year, the Assistant Superintendent for Business had resigned in December, so we didn't have this prepared in January. We had the last two years previous to that. But it's just a general way to look at this, and then internally, we did deeper, but we wanted to share the information with you.
It's helpful, I think, to see when you're looking at a year-to-year comparison, to see that we're not so far off, but we are, you know, we're spending a lot more money. We might be, you know, percentage-wise, going a little bit higher, but obviously, we spend a lot more money, and we could just budget it for some of it, but not all of it.
And that's really key, what you just said there, because we only technically spent, you know, a percentage more this year over last year, but you're working off a budget that's $3 million higher.
Absolutely.
So you've spent $3 million more year-to-date than you did, you know, this time last year.
Yeah, and then I tried to show like some of the major things, absolutely.
That's good to see it broken out.
Yes.
Any questions? Any questions? We'll follow up if we do. Okay. Sometimes, you know, when you leave or we leave, we're like, "Oh."
That's not fair.
Thank you.
Not leaving.
All right. You're still here. No, you're still here. Why, 3.02, why don't you handle that one as well? Thank you.
Okay, this is just a review that we do every year. We actually did it as part of the budget process last year, but this year, not grand ancestors, so just take a look at it a little sooner. I guess it's something you said. Okay. So, the benefit trends for this year are kind of similar, well, the ERS and TRS over the last couple of years. ERS is slightly lower, and I mean slightly, like .02%, much, it's just minimal. TRS rates are lower as well, a little bit more, but the major problem here is our health insurance rates, which is a huge benefits or a huge part of this budget, for salaries and benefits. You can see that our health insurance rates are going up 11% to 12% over last year. We do have a small increase in, I believe it's custodial nurses, monitors, and secretaries, but there are a much smaller number of employees, but theirs is going up 1% as well. At the end of all these contracts, which we mentioned last year, they'll all be at So these are just to show you that what I'm saying is true, the store rates is going down. On 14, 15, where we hit our high in TRS, we have been going down steadily. But as you can see from this, which is really important, is kind of why we talked about the whole, to have that reserve, look how these numbers fluctuate. There's huge fluctuations in these numbers. This is a very rough estimate on 17, 18, based on our salaries now, we don't have real data yet, we haven't pulled salaries into our budget process yet, but we want to give you an idea of the numbers, that we will be hopefully saving some money as we're going forward into 17, 18 because of the reduction in the rate in TRS.
And as Teresa just said, we haven't pulled the salaries in, that's something that we do January, February, so perhaps at the February board meeting, we'll have a better idea for 17, 18, but that's also, you don't know, you know, are we hiring additional employees? So it will be a best estimate based upon our current payroll. So we do that in January, February, so we bump this up just to kind of give you a little bit of an understanding.
And in February, in February board meeting, we'll be giving an update because we should have salaries there to be a better idea, at least at the beginning of the budget. ERS also is going down, but like I said, as you can see there, this rate hasn't been, hasn't fluctuated as much as TRS, which has really made a big change. It's all, it's going down, but as you can see, right now, it's barely any difference at all. And because of that, we're actually showing a little bit of an increase in ERS. Small increase. But like, you know, this is such a small portion compared to TRS, really, doubt-wise, we're talking about a lot of money. Health insurance. And when I'm showing you these numbers here, it's very important when we get to the last slide, but I'm showing you here is actual from last year versus projected actual for this year. Because our health insurance is going up 11% to 12%, depending on if it's family, individual, this year, because our health insurance is based on a calendar year, we're on a fiscal year, we're talking about $800,000 increase for the second six months of the year. So the total is gonna be 16,200,000 approximately of that, it's just health insurance for the six months of this year. So when you look at this actual to actual next year, you're only gonna see the six months of the $800,000, this year, I'm sorry, from last year to this year. We get that?
Not at all.
Well, that's because we, we get the numbers for the health insurance increase in January.
Correct.
For January to June.
Correct.
But we were budgeted for January.
Right, and we base our numbers on their estimates, which were nowhere near this.
Which were last year's estimates, which were.
Right. But, so, half of that increase hits for half of this year, and then that same 11% to 12% hits for July to December. We still don't know about next January to June, where we're facing this budget, but we know for sure it's gonna go up about $800,000 just with us next month.
So Teresa's saying this is expenditures. The report she just gave you is based upon budget. So we were, we were really pretty good in terms of projections, the report she gave five minutes ago, but the information that we received, where health insurance benefits begin January 1, that increase of 10, 11, 12%, instead of it being an expenditure of $15,400,000 this year, it's looking as, it's going to be $16,200,000. So $800,000 is not budgeted for, we're getting tagged with for this first six months of this year. And that's just because when we made the budget in April, May of last year, we didn't have this information. We based it upon the projections last year.
Which, when you...
Yeah, was it six?
I think it was like, I can't remember off the top of my head, it was definitely single less than five. So, it's major. Yes.
Almost double.
And she's talking expenditures now, but she's gonna have a slide that says budget to budget, so the numbers are gonna be a little different.
Yeah, you're gonna just keep that in mind when I get to that last slide, that this is actual, actual to projected actual for next year.
Is there any magic formula, so to speak, where we can project what it would be even next year's? I mean, that's a big...
Well, we're gonna...
We're going less than five to 12.
No, there's no doubt. And we get numbers from them, but they were far off, and usually, they're pretty close, I have to say.
How far off are they?
I'm saying it's like double this year.
But look at... So, five, six, 10.
Do we know what the major driver was? Is there a single or several major drivers to...
I don't know, but I could find out. I don't know what they get down to. That's why when I heard the Obamacare number, I have to say that I wasn't shocked by it because we are, we are this big company, and we're getting, you know, not as big an increase, but definitely. I could find out what exactly goes into that number. The other thing I wanted to show you was, we've shown this up every year for several years now, and this just shows you the difference between the active employees on health insurance and the retirees, and, pretty close. Just interesting to see if possible. This last slide, I wanna show you, this is what I was saying before, this now is budget, this year's budget, the estimated next year's budget. So, the numbers I gave you before were my actual to actual, this is budget to budget. So, as in terms of teachers, like I showed you employees' retirement going up, yes, actual to actual, but for what we budgeted, it really is going to go down a little bit because we were a little high on that budget. Remember, we get estimates from the state. Like, for example, we have an estimate right now between 9.5 and 10.5 for teachers' retirement, so what do you budget? Usually, we go in the middle, so it could be 10, 9.5, the same thing with employee retirement. And, you know, when we're talking about numbers like we're talking about, the significant dollars. So, as, so when we talk about the budget, and what you have to keep in mind when we get to the budget process, is we're saving about $450,000 in retirement, but we're gonna increase our health insurance 1.6, which means when we start out the budget, we're over $1 million in the hole, which will not be covered by our tax increase. We don't have that number yet, but it will not be covered by our tax, our tax outcome. And that's without any other expenses, that's just looking at these couple of costs. Side of the room, cheering the other way.
I just have a quick, with respect to the TRS, I need to slide that. Maybe the second slide.
Going to the best one.
Historical teachers' retirement, that one. The estimate that we got, we have, or we received from the state for 17, 18, right? Not the spring, sorry, 17, 18, is between 9.5 and 10, which is low, or it seems to be going down. You know, because I was reading, there was an article in the onboard, it was called the onboard magazine, talking specifically about that, and how, "Don't be fooled by that downward trend."
Correct.
Because it said something to the effect, and I don't know what it meant, it said something because, is it two years behind? Is it back behind two years?
Yes, because it's a whole calculation of the financial investments, and it's always a little bit behind. And we actually thought toothily, on what we were told, and understood, that it wasn't gonna change this year, it wasn't gonna go down this year, or if it was, it was gonna go down not that much. So, we would not be surprised at all if this is the bottom of it. And that's, again, why we talked about having some sort of retirement reserve, because, and I'm not saying that we should fund it, but we should have it out there if we need it, if we have it and left over, because these things change. And you can see how health insurance increasing by 11% to 12% is significantly impacting our budget process for next year. So, and you know, you've been through, you know, many of you have been on board for years, you've seen what we've had to do because TRS and ERS have gone through the roof.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Pre-K pilot proposal.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am gonna share a proposal tonight that's really a follow-up to our pre-K conversation from earlier in the year, and provides some more concrete details about offering pre-K. So the crux of this proposal is that we would be offering pre-K as a district as a three-year pilot. The three school years would start next school year with the 17, 18 school year, the 18, 19 school year, and the 19, 20 school year. In this pilot, we would propose that we would have two classes, which is actually four sections of half-day pre-K, so we would have one class within AM and APM, and a second class within AM and APM. According to New York State regulations for UPK, there are 18, there can be 18 students per section. This would give us an opportunity to provide pre-K services to 72 students in the four sections. Each of those sessions has a teacher and an aide, but it can be the same, it's the same teacher for the AM and the PM, so it's two teachers total. It can either be two aides or four aides, it doesn't, the aide doesn't need to do both sections, we can work on that. We would, as part of this proposal, we would still continue participation in UPK, the statewide full-day UPK program that we're already a part of, for students attending pre-K in our community-based organizations. So families would still have the option of choosing to put their child in the Ramapo Central pre-K, or in any of the community-based organizations that they currently have access to. We do not plan to offer transportation with this, so participation would require the family to transport the child to and from pre-K, and we see this happening without an increase in the budget. The way we see that happening is to reallocate resources from the current budget. So the teachers already work here in Ramapo Central that would be teaching it, we would be reallocating two teachers from their current assignment to teach pre-K. And then the UPK and Title I funds that we currently use to provide pre-K for many of our students would also apply to these students. And so we don't see that it would create an increase in the budget. And so we don't see that it would create an increase in the budget. We believe that there should be two goals around offering this pre-K. The first is to provide a high-quality pre-K experience for all our students. This is aligned with both strategic plan goals one and two, which are associated with teaching and learning and supports for students. Our second goal would be promote our reputation as an innovative, top-performing school district, which is aligned with strategic plan goal number six. These are also the three goals that are determined to be our priority goals this year. How will we measure the success of the program? So we're proposing it as a pilot because we wanna see, is it working, is it making a difference? So with respect to the first goal of providing a high-quality pre-K experience for all students, we would expect by the third year of the pilot that we increase participation in pre-K by 25% of the subsequent kindergarten population. If you recall from the presentation I did in September, we're at about 63, 64, 65% of our kindergarten students participated in pre-K. So we would look by the end of three years of increasing that number by 25%. The dial is a measurement that we use during kindergarten screening, and we would look to increase on the dial in specific areas indicating school readiness. There are parts of the dial that don't apply to school readiness, but we would want, we would look to see an increase in some of those areas that do. And we would look to increase the percentage of students reading on or above grade level at the end of kindergarten by 10%, and at the end of grade one by 5%. So those, three years from now, those students in grade one would be the first group that went through the pre-K. And three years from now, the kindergarten students would be the second group to have gone through pre-K. So those are the goals that we've established around providing a high-quality pre-K experience. With respect to promoting our reputation as an innovative, top-performing school district, I will remind you that there are currently no districts in Rockland County offering pre-K through the district. There are some pre-K sites at districts, but they're not run by the districts. And by the third year of this pilot, we would look to increase by 10% in kindergarten enrollment, a decrease of 10% of the attrition of students after pre-K. We do have some students now who go through our UPK that we pay for through UPK and don't end up in our schools. So we would look to decrease that attrition rate. We would look to increase the parent satisfaction of options and readiness for school. We did a survey last June that we can replicate, that one of the factors on that survey was satisfaction. And we would also look for recognition of the pre-K program beyond the district. We don't necessarily know exactly what that would look like now, but even just inquiries, can we send our children to your pre-K? Would give us, you know, would make it clear to us that the program is being recognized beyond the district. So those are our goals with respect to promoting our reputation as an innovative, top-performing school district with respect to the pilot. Just as a reminder, this is all information, almost all information that was shared in the September presentation, and it's just a recap of what the benefits would be for Ramapo Central to offer pre-K. We know that this would strengthen the bridge between pre-K and kindergarten. Ramapo Central has a very low teacher turnover rate, unlike some of our UPK providers. That's often the most challenging aspect for our UPK providers is retaining highly qualified teachers, which we have no trouble retaining. There would be increased professional development opportunities, both for the teachers participating and our kindergarten teachers and first-grade teachers to help establish that bridge. Last year, we had a site visit from the Office of Early Learning, that's the OEL, and they, in their recommendations, they recommended that the district consider creating programs that support building relationships with families and childrens prior to entry into kindergarten. So this just extends that relationship with families. Instead of a 13-year relationship, now it's a 14-year relationship. So it's just another way to help families come into the district. We do believe that this innovative early learning program will draw families to Ramapo Central and bring new families to the district, fostering amount of pride. We believe it will increase access to high-quality pre-K, and it'll highlight our commitment to educate for personal excellence. In preparation for pre-K, we have some district resources in terms of, you know, determining the location, assigning the rooms, agreements with our bargaining units, staffing, curriculum, professional development, scheduling, material supplies, and regulations you need to pre-K. These are all things that we can do within the district. They're just conversations we need to have and decisions that need to be made, but they're all things within the district that we could do, that we would be able to do in terms of preparing for pre-K. The other piece that we need to prepare for pre-K is the parents and the students. We need to make parents aware of it, the availability of it, and that's a big piece of that is the UPK application, which Childcare Resources releases that application to the public on January 31st. So that's part of our timeline, our immediate timeline. And of course, promote it through all of our district communications as well. We will, we're coordinating with Childcare Resources of Rockland to continue their support of our pre-K program because in the way they support our pre-K program now, we would continue to benefit from that support. We've also worked with the Office of Early Learning. They did a site visit last year, the same two people from the Office of Early Learning came back this year. We just had the site visit just the week before vacation. They were very supportive. You know, we can, their office is through state ed, so it doesn't cost anything. This is what they do. They are experts in early childhood education. So any, you know, resources and support that they can offer us, we take advantage of. We do wanna think about the timeline in particular for parents and students and what procedures we'll have. With respect to that timeline, so January, as I mentioned, that UPK application is released on January 31st. Prior to that, we need Childcare Resources approval of the site, which, because it's in a school building, it's not a big deal. There are certain square footage requirements for the classroom, there has to be enough square footage per child. That's not, I don't anticipate that being an issue for us. There needs to be a bathroom either in the room or close to the room. Again, I don't see that being an issue. Our schools are set up for children. So I don't anticipate any issues with that. In February, March is the UPK application period. So parents are able to access the application on January 31st. Childcare Resources holds a series of UPK meetings throughout the county in the beginning of February. Traditionally, and this year again, there's a, there'll be a meeting at Connor on February 2nd. And that's when parents start getting really interested in the UPK process. During the two-month period of February to March, the parents are responsible for getting their application together. They have to prove their, you know, prove their residency. They have to get the child's immunizations in order. They do all of that stuff. Meanwhile, they, the parents need to make a decision about where they want their child to attend UPK. Part of the application requires them to put down the first choice, the second choice, and the third choice. So during that time, we anticipate we'll be fielding inquiries from families. We will have some parent information meetings. We don't have a program to show them right now, so we'll have to have some information. Typically, the parents go around, they visit the various sites, they see the programs, they have open houses. We're not gonna be able to do that because we don't have a program in place right now. So we'll have some parent information meetings where we can give them as much information as possible. We'll wanna finalize the location and the scheduling, you know, it's important to parents. Is the program from 9:00 to 11:30, or is it from 8:00 to 10:30? That's an important distinction for our parents. We would wanna be able to finalize that information and then begin working on the curriculum planning and professional development. So that's sort of that late winter, early spring. Able to June, we would be determining staffing, continuing the curriculum, market professional development, determining what materials and resources we have in district. You know, we do unfortunately have a number of kindergarten classrooms that are not open now, that have been open over the last couple of years, so we have a lot of materials. It's a matter of getting them organized, figuring out exactly what we have. The families through Childcare Resources typically get notified for UPK in late May. Usually it's right around Memorial Day, give or take a couple of days. And at that point, we would also have an opportunity, if needed, to adjust, adjust what we're offering based on enrollment. So at that point, we would know, do we have 30 kids who've applied, do we have 100 kids who've applied? And we have an opportunity at that point to make some adjustments. That's also able to June, when we really have to start, particularly in June, getting ready for compliance with Childcare Resources and state regulations. Because once it turns over to July 1st, that's when, okay, now we're running this program and we need to make sure we've met all the regulations we need to do. Over the summer, we would finalize the pre-K assignments. There's always some, you know, typically there's always some movement. Parents had signed up for this, but changed their mind, now they want that. You know, that goes on all summer. That's also when we do our Title I assignments and, you know, make any kind of fine tuning that needs to happen. Also, over the summer, we would continue with the curriculum planning and really formally readying the space for September 2017. So these are the classrooms where it's gonna be. We've identified the materials that are gonna be in the room, these are the tables, these are the chairs. This is what it's gonna look like. So that, that kinda stuff would take place over the summer. Questions? Yes?
Okay, Teresa, I wanna go on my list. So, I, quick, few questions. Is it the process? Because clearly we want to attract students that are in district. You know, I think you mentioned, it's nice when they can come into our district that they're going to be coming into as elementary students. But we don't really have a choice. Like, how is it chosen? Is it a first come, first served? Because are we choosing, is CCR?
So we've directed CCRR that on the application, it will say Ramapo Central students only.
So we do have that option?
Yes.
Great.
And we've indicated that to them.
Thank you. Application process of the industry students, timing. Early, late school, you mentioned the timing piece.
A.M. P.M.
Right, well, A.M., P.M., but we have early and late buildings.
Yes.
And I know that we had talked about earlier that a lot of our buildings could probably accommodate up to the two classrooms. So do we know whether early schedule versus late schedule would be more popular for this?
We didn't really use that in the consideration. We are planning the school, the location for the pre-K classes to be at Viola, which for next year is on an early schedule.
And that's the other piece, they rotate.
Yes, so the pre-K will rotate along with that. There, if you think about pre-K, it is, yes, people have multiple children, but for each child, for the whole year, it's at the same time.
I'm just trying to understand how that's gonna work. You mentioned that the teachers would be reallocated in the budget, that we could shift the teachers, and that you didn't anticipate an additional cost in the budget, but what about the aid?
So the aid could be an additional cost, but we believe that'll be covered by the UPK funds.
By the money we get.
Yes, by the money we get from UPK will cover the cost of the aid. It takes 20 students to fully cover the cost of the aid, both salary and benefits. So if you think about 20 out of 36 students need to be UPK students to cover the cost of the aid. I don't think that'll be a problem.
Okay, and do we have a maximum capacity, like based on?
It's 18. 18 is the state regulation. We can put up to 20, but if we put up, if we put 19 or 20, we could put a second aid in the room. And that's the state regulation.
The aid is the cutoff.
18 is the magic number.
All right, thank you.
I'll have to take in, so. Did I hear you say it's one building, we're gonna put the two classrooms for periods in?
The plan at the moment is for it to be at Viola with two classrooms at Viola, yes.
And we selected Viola based on why?
There were a lot of factors that went into it. The first one was space. Space is a big factor. A drop-off, because the parents are dropping kids off, drop-off is a factor as well. Viola has been very supportive of the concept of pre-K. We've had two Viola teachers for part of the presentation back in September. And so it just was a natural fit.
So, for example, I'm just gonna throw a building that I'm familiar with, not to say that that's where it should be. Charlene has that second drop-off area that's in the, by the cafeteria, the new wing. We call it the new wing, but it's probably 10 years old or more. That wouldn't, that wouldn't offer itself.
That, that could work as well. I mean, a decision had to be made, so that was the decision.
And we would prefer that all of them are in the same building as opposed to?
We would, especially for the first year, because it's new for both the teachers. While the teachers are certified in early childhood, and, or they are teachers who will choose to do this, it's new for them. And so it's much more supportive to the teachers for them to be able to have daily contact. Oh, I tried this, I tried that. How did that go? How did that go? And we just, one of the things we wanted to do was, as complicated as this is, when a choice could be made to keep it simple, we went with that choice. So it was more straightforward to have the two building, the two classrooms in the same place.
And so what if by a magical phenomenon, we have more than those sections? Do we have a Plan B where we would actually take more, or we are not gonna take more?
Well, that would have to come down to the budget, and with the information I just heard, that might be challenging. But with a, say we had 100 kids. All of those 100 kids do have a second choice. So they would end up just being placed in their second choice, which would be any of the community-based organizations that are currently their only choices.
So we're definitely limiting our, our admission into this room to 75?
72. Because it's 18 times 12.
So we're not taking?
If other, if a lot of other things changed and we had the opportunity, and you know, if CCR, if Childcare Resources called us in May and said, look, we have 100 applications, then we would have to look at some other factors and make that decision.
And it's not a blessing issue, really, we have more of a teacher aid issue. And if the money would cover the cost and the salaries.
Yes.
How are we selecting the teachers? And I can imagine some of this is very technical, you don't have to go into that. Obviously, how are qualified, you're gonna look at that. But all of our teachers, are they teachers that otherwise we're not gonna have a class to teach? Are they?
So it'll be posted internally, meaning only Ramapo Central teachers can apply for it. They do have to have the appropriate certification, which some of our elementary teachers do not, some do, some don't. And so they would have to have the appropriate certification. And then we would, depending on how many applicants they have, we would have some type of interview process.
But you had teachers express interest?
Absolutely.
Are they usually teachers who are, right now have the lower grades, the first graders, the kindergartners that kinda lend themselves to?
Many of them.
transition into a younger group?
Yes. Not necessarily, it's not limited to them. The certification, so the certification, depending on when you got certified, sort of depends on what your certification is. For some people, it's birth to age five, for some people, it's pre-K to two. It's, it varies depending on when you became certified. But anyone who has a certification that goes below K, and anyone who is currently working in our district is certified from K to six. So these are folks who are certified really anywhere from almost birth to sixth grade. And so they might be in an upper-level grade because that's where they've been assigned. And, but it may not be their first choice. But they also may be people who've been teaching kindergarten first grade for 20 years.
Is a candidate, basically. So we know that we're going to offer a more strong education, a stronger background. We have more qualified teachers. But, you know, and possibly some of those parents would consider that it's a plus to stay within district where they're gonna end up anyway. But what other incentives do we think we could put out there? What's appealing besides, you know, staying in district?
Getting to know how our district works, getting used to the communications, the, just the general procedures, which of course vary from building to building. But there are certain things that are fairly consistent across the district. The other thing, the other piece of it is, you know, in this first year, when they're deciding, we, as I said before, we don't have a program for them to look at. So.
I guess to clarify my question, I meant to say, for example, are we offering something that's visibly different from what they will get in another location?
They're, they're getting a certified teacher who's guaranteed to be there for the year, which is something that it's very hard for a community-based organization to, well. That teacher is also getting a tremendous amount of PD.
So that piece is important, so put it out.
And has all the experience teaching of however long they've been here, 10, 15, 20 years.
So that would be our marketing strategy, then?
That's our strength.
I thought you just took on to it. I also think that, well, first of all, the teacher would also have all the resources and it'd be other teachers and the district itself, which is an advantage because regular daycares don't necessarily, pre-K shouldn't necessarily have that. The other thing that I think it helps from the parent-child-student perspective is, it makes them part of the community from an earlier point. So that, that was the key in my question of, is it?
So that, that was the key in, in my question of, is it gonna be centered on round up central students? Because we really wanna grab those parents that are planning to be here, that are gonna have that stronger sense of community early on, so... I've heard you say that they have to be round up central resident in order to be admitted into the program. We don't think that maybe taking some of our non-residents would mean that they would wanna continue in our district?
So, one of the things is, we wanna make sure our kids get first picks.
Right.
Just suppose, remember the magic number seventy-two? Suppose we have sixty, or sixty-five. We could then, at that point, say to Childcare Resources, "We have seven slots, we have ten slots, whatever it is, if people from other districts want to, um, fill those slots, we have space for them." We could let them know that in May.
There would be no charge for that?
The, the, the parents can't, we can't collect tuition. If we're offering it through UPK, unlike a childcare facility, we cannot accept tuition. So what, if they came from another district, they would come with their UPK stipend from that other district. And so we would actually receive their UPK stipend, but we would receive that from the district, not from the parents.
Great. I have a silly, yeah, silly question. This isn't gonna impact the high school daycare program for the learning of the students, and that will run separately on...
I mean, if you think about it, no one's gonna be in this program who's not in UPK somewhere else right now. The difference is, they're just gonna be in here. So it's not gonna be any more of a conflict than it is now.
The fact that we are offering half-days, though, some of these parents are looking for full day, so will it be able, will they be, you know, and there's no transportation, so it'd be hard for working parents, from what I see, uh, having experienced that, to, to do that, you know, halfway through the day trip from one facility to another.
So what's fascinating, because, that was the very first thing I said. When this was first proposed to me, that was my very first reaction, "I can never do that as a working parent. These people are crazy." And then we ran that survey last spring, and we found out from that survey that sixty percent of our families who participated in UPK did not take advantage of any before-care or after-care. I have to tell you, I was shocked. I was stunned. That was by far the most significant finding, in my opinion, from that survey, because it was so contrary to what I expected.
Those numbers are this high of either a stay-home parent or a parent who's working with me attending the trip?
Or someone who's working...
Or has a grandparent or a, another relative?
I was so surprised.
I actually would never expect that.
Yes, I was so surprised. And that, but that really tells me that, you know, there is a market for this.
And there are a lot of parents, I mean, I'm, I'm much older now, but in my younger child days, you know, they were stay-at-home moms, but they wanted the kids to have exposure, they wanted to get them interacting with other children, which is great, and if they can do it, and there's a market for it, why not? You know, I mean, it surprises me that the number's that high. So guys never stop working, but, great for them. Um, serving the, the ELL, uh, population in pre-K, can you explain a little bit, how would we support that? I would see that's probably a huge plus for them to start in a school environment that early and, you know, and fully accomplish a lot during that time.
So there's a couple pieces of that. Remember that I did say we would continue our participation in the statewide full-day UPK, which we do now. Our criteria for the twenty students who we pay for full day is that they're low-income and they are learning English. That would continue. So our twenty students who get into the full-day lottery, they would continue doing that at whatever community-based organizations they're currently doing it in now. So part of the idea there is that twenty of our media students will be served, serviced in that way. Um, it, just in general, though, um, learning language, the earlier you learn language, the easier it is to learn, and the better you learn it. Um, so one of, one of the things I say is, we have four-year-olds now who go into UPK not speaking English, and so they're on our radar, and we look at them all year, "Oh, these are potential ELL students for kindergarten, these are potential ELLs for kindergarten." And then kindergarten rolls around, and maybe only a quarter or a third of them get designated as English language learners. Because part of the reason is, it's the beauty of being four. When you're four years old and you're learning English by a highly qualified teacher, learning letter sounds, learning through play, learning through all those ways, you learn language so quickly. It's, I mean, it's really amazing.
Well, I'm, I'm a testimonial, but I was four. But my question then, is those twenty, uh, students who are categorized as needing that full-day service, they will not be qualified to come in?
They won't, because they'll be going a full day somewhere else.
Right. And my last question, sorry. So, looking at the timeline in the last page, um, by April or June, when we really know for sure how many we're getting, our budget costs, I guess this is also for Dr. Adams, has, is completely done. Um, so how do we step if we needed less or we needed more? How is that gonna play?
So that's why the proposal is for two. We think two is a reasonable number. We think one, well, we would definitely have more applicants than we have for one, um, and we think three is a lot. So two is kind of right in that sweet spot where we think it's really realistic. Um, you know, it, UPK only covers ninety-five kids to begin with, so if we're looking at numbers like a hundred, that's a, a totally different conversation. Our total numbers from the last couple years are in the hundred forty to a hundred fifty range, and we know that some of those families have to have the before and after care, so we know it's not reasonable to expect, really, that a hundred out of the hundred fifty are gonna want this half-day program without transportation, where the parents have to pick them up both ways. So I'm very confident that two is a very reasonable number.
So you've made as close predictions as feasible?
Mm-hmm.
Because our budget will be already filled out.
And, and we can still send them to CBOs. We, you know, we still have those community-based organizations. To be honest, and the community-based organizations are gonna take a little, this is gonna hurt them a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to the timeline, just, excuse me, just for a second. So the application becomes available on the thirty-first. So, deciding to be approved by the thirty-first?
Um, yes, she's actually coming tomorrow.
Okay.
To measure.
Did you say that already?
No, I didn't. I didn't say she was coming tomorrow, I said she was coming.
Okay.
But with that appointment set up for tomorrow.
How, how, how long does that whole process take?
It's very short. She has to measure and make sure there's enough square footage and background.
Okay, but it was, it's not a big evaluation of, of the proposed teachers or...
Not at all.
Anything else? It's really, they're looking at facilities, you're looking at space, do you meet pretty basic requirements, and that's really it?
Yes.
And then, is there any type, do we get a formal approval?
Um, no, our formal approval is that we're listed on the application.
And then from there, I mean, I mean, are there other hard deadlines? There must be hard deadlines around some of these.
Yes, the, the, when the families are notified in May, that's significant, because if any changes were to occur after that, you're greatly going to, you know, that's gonna have a big impact on families. So once the, the families know about it in May, that's a, a, um, human deadline, uh, because of, it's just gonna impact people. The other deadline is the compliance deadline. There are some things that have to be in by June thirty, and have to be in place by July first, for the seventeen, eighteen school.
And that, that would be my next question about, you know, any type of...
Like, we have to have an insurance certificate. Right, we have to have an insurance certificate by July first. We'll have that, because we have a school, it's in a school.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so things like that.
I thought, one last thing, I'm sorry. Um, so...
No, I get that, that's all.
I'm sorry. Um, I apologize. I'm just thinking of like the, you know, the whole picture here, as you're describing, you know, the requirement. So, we have teachers who are capable of taking this on, we have aides on this survey?
We either have aides or a real high rate.
Or we don't have a high. And then, straight away, who's gonna really run the show?
So the principals have oversight, they'll have the sort of day-to-day responsibility of the children, you know, someone scans their knee, the nurse gives them a band-aid. Um, you know, the teachers, the, the first contact with the parents, the principal would be the second. I would have oversight in terms of all the external types of things. Um, you know, making sure that, uh, all the regulations are met, all the compliance issues. Uh, there is, uh, Childcare Resources offers a lot of services which we would wanna take advantage of, they do monthly visits, and that's really for the purpose of, you know, making sure we're exhibiting best practices, utilizing best practices in the program.
So the, so the principal would be just, what, what's the principal role?
Well, the principal evaluates the teachers, the principal guarantees the safety of the children, the principal coordinates whatever needs to be done in terms of drop-off and pickup, those types of things.
It's, it's another class in their building?
Yeah.
So they're responsible for it as if it was another class in their building?
Yes.
But, but on that, for that topic, it's a new experience for them as well?
Yes.
And, and a totally different age group that has different needs and wants?
Well...
Ball is worn, whatever?
Right, I mean, they're four, and the principals are gonna be working with four-year-olds, five-year-olds, a third of whom are four when they start in September. So they're a year younger than their youngest students.
So you don't foresee this taking too much of their time to...
I see, I do see it taking some time. I also recognize that unfortunately, our elementary schools have fewer kids than they had in the past.
And hence, in the future, passing that pilot, do you keep spreading this out?
I would love for this pilot to be so successful that we have so many questions we have to answer.
It was love.
I, I can't...
Meaning dividing the burden over two buildings, that's what I...
Of all kinds of questions, like, if this is so successful that we have those questions to answer, that would be awesome. So...
I, 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 you know, I am concerned about, you know, one building happening, which is happening, and one building... Just airing that question. Thank you.
No, I actually had a lot of questions, but...
Yeah, you're done now?
But I think, you know, these report is, uh, is very well done, and bringing us back on the speed, which we've given us several months ago, certainly, questions from my colleagues. I think it's great, it's something that, if this could really lead to the next discussion that I have.
Yeah, right. But I do have some questions.
Okay.
If I may. Um, you, you talk, just to kinda go, this is my last question, but based upon the principals having to do more, the nurses having to possibly do more, because granted, the enrollment's going down, but this is a new group, this is a new class, this is a new grade, so it's me, that's not gonna incur any increased cost in that respect?
I don't anticipate it being substantial. I mean, we do, we are, we do have the MOAs, the, to just show that everyone's on board with this and comfortable with it. Um, yes, is it gonna take a little of everybody's time? It, I shouldn't say of everybody's time, it will take a little of the nurses' time, it will take some of the principals' time. I don't anticipate it being overwhelming, remember, the kids are only there for two and a half hours.
Boy, yes. Okay. Um, you talked, you, you mentioned that the, on the second page, I guess it says, um, you were gonna increase on the, wait, hold on, this is my, you talked about by the thirty of the pilot, and you had the three goals and what have you. Um, you know, and I know you've, you've done a tremendous amount of work on this, but are those, do you believe those are actually attainable? Some of those numbers are like, seem rather aggressive.
Like, can you give me an example?
Optimistic?
Twenty-five percent.
Optimistic. Yeah, increase participation in pre-K by twenty-five percent of the subsequent kindergarten situation.
Yeah, so right now, we have about a hundred fifty out of two hundred twenty-five kids participating, so we have seventy-five kids not participating. So twenty-five, twenty-five percent of seventy-five is...
Math?
Twenty, seventeen. I think it would, uh, right, I think it's very reasonable that, yes, because we have extra slots, so if they're not, if not all the kids in the program are UPK, then we give those slots to kids that normally we couldn't give pre-K to at all.
Now, it's my understanding, with UPK, the state's requiring the UPK teachers in all of these daycares to be certified teachers?
Yes.
So whether they're certified teachers there or certified teachers here, are you saying that, because your third goal, it says, increase the percentage of students being reading honorable grade level, by K, in kindergarten by ten percent, and, yeah, first grade by five?
So...
Are they not getting that out of the, the, the teachers who are teaching them now?
So the teachers that are teaching them now are not always the same teacher all year. That's a, that's probably the biggest challenge of the community-based organization, is giving teachers. Um, we don't have that issue. We also have teachers who have been teaching reading for their careers. So they've been teaching whatever grade it is, K, one, three, four, they've been teaching reading, and they have all those years of experience to draw on.
Okay. Um, you said that, you talked about the cost of it. You said there's gonna be no increase in cost.
As there no increase in budget?
No increase, oh, yeah. Sorry. So no increase in budget, but, but there is gonna be an increase to, in cost, I mean, it has to be, we're, we're putting a new program in, it's gotta be an increase in cost somewhere. So, um, you went over the numbers, I think, last time, you talked about, you know, and just look at the last, uh, presentation.
Success teacher.
Um, I don't know how, if, if those numbers have changed, or would have, you were talking about the funds needed from the districts, and this would be the offset of what the state provides.
Right.
It was a hundred and eight thousand. So, so although it, it doesn't increase the budget, but it's still increasing cost, and I, correct?
Right.
Because it has to be an increase in cost, we can't say it's not gonna increase in cost.
It's, it, well, it's spending the money a different way. So if you take the fact that the teachers already work for us, so the teachers are already in our budget, so, and I'm making this up, instead of teaching first grade here and second grade here, we're gonna move them to pre-K. So they're already in our budget, we're moving the teachers.
Okay, but those teachers, you said you would take teachers from their current assignment, so then who's teaching their, who's doing their current assignment?
We don't, we believe, because of the continued decrease in enrollment, that, that won't be...
So that's where, that's where the difference comes from, and these, these would be arguably teachers, who, who's all the enrollment, and...
The teachers themselves aren't the people that don't, like, it's not like, because this class got reduced, this person is gonna teach pre-K, but it's a, it's a ripple effect.
Right, so that's where it increases, it doesn't increase the budget per se, but it, what otherwise would have decreased, it but it was not decreasing.
Correct.
It's pretty allocating staff, that's a good thing.
Correct.
Right, as opposed to, exacts. Um, the, I'm sorry, it said, on the one slide, it said, continue participation in UPK and excess UPK?
That's the statewide full-day UPK. That's the twenty students I was talking about, that we have the grant for, that we pay for them, uh, to attend full-day pre-K.
And we, and we wouldn't be doing a full day, because that would be, you know, whatever five...
This, this, right, and this goes back to trying to keep it simple the first year, when we talked about that, we went back and forth on it, but we felt it was simpler to do the two half-days, not worry about much. Those students do tend to need transportation.
Right.
And so it, it was less complicated for us to do this.
So the teachers who are, who are working the universal pre-K classes are gonna be working two, two-and-a-half hour periods, must be?
Correct.
Right? Okay. Um, you talked about the certified teachers, and you mentioned several times professional development. Now, that's something that's an increase in cost also, because we pay for that.
It is, but it's going to professional development, specific to preschool, instead of going to professional development on units of staff.
So along the same line, yes, it doesn't necessarily increase the, increase the budget So along the same line, yes, it doesn't necessarily increase the, increase the budget per se, but it increased costs, because they would have to do.
Their only, actually, their only required professional development is offered free from childcare resources, but this is the professional development we know they would want and we would want to provide.
Right, okay. All right, hold on, agree with me. Um, you said no other districts have it, do we know, we know why, like?
Uh, in the, yes, in the previous presentation, North Rockland had it years ago and they decided to move over and just do it with childcare resources and the community-based organizations. South Orange Town had a program that specifically also integrated special ed students, they stopped running that one a few years ago. Natty Wet has one in their building, but it's run by a community-based organization in their building.
Okay, and do we know why they don't do it anymore?
Um, funding, resources, I mean, North Rockland doesn't even have full-day kindergarten.
Right. Okay. In your, oh, no, I asked that one already, thank you. Um, the UPK application is available on January thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, is that correct?
Correct.
So by, and on the application itself, it, it has a list of all the sites.
Correct.
So if, if the board was to approve this, we have to approve it by the thirty-first of January, do you understand that? Right. Correct?
That's a question.
Yeah. There you go. All right, so that's something we have to, we'll, we'll talk about. Okay, so here's my question, if, if, for instance, we have, we go forward, okay, and it comes August or even July, whenever, and we're like, there's like no kids going, because there is an issue, there's no, you know, if I have, if I have two kids and one's three and one's four, they're going to, they're both going to the same daycare, not driving all over the place. Um, but, so if, if we don't have the enrollment, can we tell the state we're not doing it? Like, is there anything, or of course, there are a bit of enrollment that we feel we need to make this somewhat worthwhile?
Eric.
Four kids.
Eric, can you queue up my timeline for a minute, it's the last slide. Um, in man there, I have a justice needed based on enrollment. So we talked about this scenario, well, what if we had a hundred kids? Well, let's go back and what if, what's the scenario if we had thirty to forty kids? So if the scenario is that we have thirty to forty kids, I would come with a recommendation that we change it to one class instead of two.
Okay, so for that, we are, we can do.
We can do that, we really need, and that's why I said, but Matt asked about deadlines, I said that family notification is really a human deadline, because I would want to make that decision before we notify families.
Right, and that's notify them that this is accepted as well.
Right, so that's, so childcare resources actually notifies them, but the applications are due to childcare resources by the end of March. So at some point in April and early May, childcare resources knows how many requests they have. So I could contact them and I could say, are we, what are we looking at, are we looking at thirty, fifty, seventy, a hundred, what are we looking at? And at that point, I can, and if they said to me, well, we only have forty, or we only have thirty, or we only have thirty-five, I would then say to them, well, then we're only going to offer one section, we're not going to offer two, which honestly, they don't, that doesn't really matter to me.
They don't, they have, people have a second choice.
Yeah, the families will all have a second choice.
What if, I wonder if, if we go forward with this, that it's, you know, she builds the bridge, which would be awesome, which is absolutely a point, what if there's, is there, is there, you know, could we not do the program at all come May?
We could not do the program.
Okay, and, and obviously, these, we didn't have a question for the attorney left, but that would be in any type of MOA, then.
Yes.
The, the other attorney. Doctor Ron. Okay. I think that. Do you have a bottom line number, just following up on Theresa?
Um, I, I don't have one in my head, it becomes one of practicality of we have a full-time teacher, and if we only have enough kids for half a day, then what's the teacher doing the other half of the day? If there's only five, then that all happened, I'm confident.
Well, we could do just one half day.
Right, but then, we could.
Well, you'll only hire a teacher for half a day.
That's okay.
Not ideal, you know, you have to be realistic about it. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it, thank you. All right, so then, um, the next, uh.
Yes, and I think some of them are here in the audience.
Anybody, whoever. Thank you, I did have that first presentation, that was great. The next item is the discussion item for universal pre-K, I think we kind of, you kind of did that, so, however, there is the issue of we do have to, you know, and unfortunately, Clark and Marley should not hear. Yeah, you know, and they need, this is a pretty big decision to a certain extent, I mean, but we need to get their input as well, but we still have to have a meeting for the thirty-first, so.
A special meeting about other matters and.
Right, if we have to have that.
Right, so we're going to need a special meeting.
If that's going to be before, will that be needed, necessary before January thirty-first? Right, okay, all right, so, 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 yeah, yeah, so, before you leave, leave some dates. Okay, any other questions then, or any other discussions with respect to universal pre-K?
You just said dates, but should we have Angela just send an email out of the usual applicants for open days between now and then?
Yes.
Versus us giving dates?
No, but what I'm saying, just we coordinate and have it in one place instead of us just throwing dates out. Would you mind, would you mind sending an email? All right, just, you know.
Thank you.
We gotta do, we have to do a quick, because time flies. All right, so, that being said.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
We're at four point zero two, which is the discussion regarding the school district name change. I think we discussed it back in, I don't remember what meeting it was, but since then, we've had, we have the results of the all-three surveys, I say all-three, they're the same survey, but three different venues, so to speak. Steve, do you mind just bringing that up again?
Not at all, actually, Eric, if you, yeah, Eric, if you could just show folks who are watching this, where they can find the survey results on the website. But just briefly, while Eric is doing that, I'll report again, sixteen hundred and seventy-three parents responded to the one-question survey, ninety-one percent of them, or fifteen hundred and twenty-two, said yes, they support the name change, nine percent, or one hundred and fifty-one, said no. Three hundred and ninety-seven staff members responded, with ninety-two point four percent, or three hundred and sixty-seven responding yes, seven point six percent, or thirty, responding no. And two hundred and ninety-two responses from the general public through the Excelsior newsletter and the website, ninety-three point five percent, or two hundred and seventy-two, six point five percent, or nineteen, no. So clearly, I think we'd categorize this incredibly strongly, but overall, positive support.
The, the difference between the parent survey, the sent an email out, correct?
Yes.
And then the Excelsior, right? Is there a different, is that the public?
The top, the two ninety-two is the public, or we don't have access to email addresses of the general public, and so it was done through the Excelsior newsletter and put on the district website for a week, and so anyone who was interested could respond to it.
Right, I'm just trying to see how the Excelsior can reach people. All right, three hundred and two. Any other, anything else?
No, I think just on behalf of the administration, we think it's an appropriate step at this point for the school district, and so what we'd like to do is to bring aboard a resolution for your approval that would authorize the superintendent to pursue an agent in a way that he believes to be most appropriate.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
You know, we've mentioned concerns in the past about.
Amali, sorry.
Concerns about, just like the participation rates, which are, you know, the, the, I know my colleague had mentioned, you know, the sixteen seventy-three is about half the parents or less, what, what's the proportion?
I think the staff and parent participation rates are incredible, I think they were pretty high. We sent that parent connected to slightly over three thousand, so for us to get that many responses is incredible, more than fifty percent.
Parents, or slightly, fifty percent, you know, responding, of those, it's, as we said, overwhelmingly positive towards the change. But again, response rates are half, half the people that we targeted, and also, you know, the concerns that I've heard about, you know, it's not really measuring accurately because you could go and vote more than once, and, you know, using different, you know, whatever.
I'm not, I'm not explaining how you could have done that, but when you were able to vote more than once, you know, ask the same person voting, we have no way of really knowing how many people these are, you know.
I would say, only in response to that, if the response rates were even close to that, we'd still be incredibly pleased by it. Uh, if the response yes, no were closer to fifty percent or even sixty percent, that might be a more compelling case for us. That level of response of positive nature is, in my opinion, overwhelming, and the final thing I would say is decisions are made by those who show up. If you care that much about the topic, this wasn't hard to weigh in on, it was recorded widely in the press, through social media for weeks, months, folks know how to get ahold of us, they know how to get ahold of you, and you also upheld the public here. You know, if you care that much about the topic, make your opinion known, we gave folks multiple opportunities to do it.
Finally, very importantly, is making a strong case with the education department so that we hopefully don't get turned down for this, and making a strong case, rather than just relying on this, because, you know, scientifically you could put holes in those numbers, is relying on, you know, I've done my own research and, you know, the name, the name confusion, as we had discussed, is really one of the strongest bases for NICE to consider a name change. So the name confusion piece is a powerful piece here, you know, they would hopefully approve it based on that. So, so to document name confusion, we, we need a little bit more legwork administratively, that doesn't necessarily involve our community, because, you know, we've collected that, you know, things like, you know, are people confusing our neighboring district for us as well? Does it go both ways? Um, you know, the evidence of confusion, you know, you've said you've done some Google searches and, you know, a different district would, would come up when, if we can document, if we can document and put some, you know, screenshots, whatever it is that we could put as a foundation for our argument that there is that name confusion, I think it will build a strong case, because hopefully we don't want to be turned down. You know, it's one thing to decide amongst this, oh, we want this to go through.
I think certainly we're prepared to do, we've done already a significant amount of legwork on this issue, I think that hopefully is apparent to everybody, we're certainly prepared to do what we need to do to make sure that the case is compelling, what we're asking for is the authorization to do it.
If and when the board votes on this, what sort of timetable then, when would you submit it, what, what's necessary next?
I would anticipate that upon approval from the board, that in less than five days, we would have any contact with the commissioner. There's not an application online for us to do this, there's not a statute or regulation that says how to do this, so I would reach out to her and ask her, or just let her know what we intend to do, and if there's something that she's looking for in particular, in terms of her decision-making, then we would make sure that that's part of our application or our petition to the commissioner. But I would say within five to seven days, we would have it fully submitted to the commissioner.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is that a no? Is that a leaning for a stretch?
You're talking about in terms of in favor of.
Well, we're not going to, we're not voting on it today.
No, no, but I'm saying in terms of our discussion.
Yeah, yeah. I think, you know, the only, you know, Amali, thank you for your comment with respect to, you know, obviously showing, you know, we can discuss somewhat of this, the confusion between the two districts, and if that is what will, will, will be the reason where the commissioner will say, oh, yeah, confusion, that's one of the reasons why we'll be different shape names, sounds reasonable, it's just, nobody's really done it, I think we did it.
Long time.
East Rampo did it nineteen seventy-three or something like that, we did it maybe shortly thereafter. And I don't think there was confusion at that time, so it's interesting to see why they were approved at that point, we were approved at that point. Um, I just say that in, in your conversations, Dr. Adams, that would be in your conversations with the commissioner or what have you, if there's anything in there, or any insight that she gives that says we shouldn't be doing this, that obviously you would come back to us.
Sure.
And, and, you know, we can have a further conversation with that. Um, we did have a public hearing also, you know, and like Steve said, you know, and we had people who opposed it, and we, and I appreciated their comments, we'd received some letters and some emails and what have you, and I think it seems to be more, more on the historical portion of it, with credit to our historian on the board here. So I think just we go along this path and we'll have to vote at the next meeting, is just to remember the history of this school district, I graduated from here, you know, sorry, Matt, but, you know, we graduated from here and we, you know, it's always been Rampo, Rampo essential, and it's kind of, the, the historical part of it is a little sensitive, but, you know, if you look around the building and what have you, you know, the, the history of this school district was well before I came here, so, just to keep that in mind, to remember the history of this, of this district.
But, but I, I think if I may, and that would be my role, I guess, you know, and some people have said that, well, how could you support changing a name, you know, being the town historian, the county historian, or not, is I think we have to look at the fact of a central school district, that term is rather arcane, because the idea, when we were the first school district in Rockland County to actually centralize, and the reason we did that, and that vote was in nineteen forty, in nineteen forty-one, we actually came to be, because we were centralizing school districts that were made up of Sloughsburg, of Hillburn, of Suffolk, of Cherry Lane, of Armont, and actually Loyola, there were schools there, and the idea was to centralize the school districts and have them under one. East Rampo, that portion of the town of Rampo wasn't interested at the time, because they were looking to centralize all of the town of Rampo. Spring Valley had a very strong school district at the time, they wanted to stay alone and go it that way. You know, the other thing I, I think that people have to realize is that names change throughout history, you know, history remains the same, it's just that it's interpreted. I mean, if you really want to go back, and I wouldn't bore people with, with history, but I, I find it ironic, because in seventeen ninety-one, I never said, oh, there you go. In seventeen ninety-one, when both Rampo and Clarkstown separated from the town of Haverstow, we really weren't the town of Rampo, we initially were New Hempstead, so back then Rampo couldn't get it right. Because, and, and I'll further illustrate it by saying that there were problems, because you had Hempstead, Long Island, there was a community there, that's why the idea, they thought, well, we'll make it, you know, New Hempstead. Well, for whatever reason, that didn't seem to work, and the name, again, was changed, and the legislature, believe it or not, through some misspelling or something, it was actually known as the town of Hempstead, so instead of it being Hempstead, it was H A M, I'm not making this up, I mean, it's historical documentation. It wasn't really until eighteen twenty-nine, folks, that we became the town of Rampo. I think that was a harbinger of things to come, but, you know, and if we go back a little further, and then I'll stop shortly after this, the Native Americans referred to this area as Point of the Mountains, so if we want to be Point of the Mountains school district, that would be one thing. I mean, when John Suffolk came here, he obviously didn't look at a Google map and say, oh, there's a place called Suffolk, I think I'll go there and live there. When he was here, it didn't become Suffolk until the railroad came through, he actually called it New Antrim, after his birthplace in Northern Ireland. So my point is, name change, and I'll just leave it at that.
I read the book. I did read his book, I did read his book. Thank you very much.
Well, you know, the other thing I thought that was abundantly clear, and I thought it was interesting, because it was on the same night that we were taking testimony from the public, and we had the opportunity to see our kindest crusaders up there, as it's going through the hallway, it wasn't so limited with me, what did you keep seeing flash? What they're wearing, what you had, Madam President, Suffolk, 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 that's what was emblazing, that's what we are and who we are, and I thought it was also interesting that our cultural expo at the high school is known as what? We are Suffolk.
Absolutely.
Do you have one little?
Come on.
You know, we had heard from some of the, um, letters that we received or emails and at the public forum, the question, why can't you put this referendum on vote, I just want to clarify that we had actually considered that and looked into it with our attorney, and, you know, he's shared a document with a recommendation from actually the state education department that discourages such referendums from being put on a ballot, because they create confusion to the public, correct me if I'm saying this correctly, Dr. Adams, because the, the decision lies upon the board about to make the decision and not the public on a name change. So if we put it as a proposition on the ballot, it could give a misguided impression that, or actually, the decision falls within the hands of the public, which in this case it doesn't. So, so NICE recommends against putting propositions that are confusing to that extent.
Advisory.
And advisory and not decision-making, so, so that was the response that we received. We did go that road and investigated it.
Right, right.
You know, unfortunately, it can't, you know, it's not a good idea, so, thanks.
With any advisory. Okay, um, any more questions? No, um, that being said, I'll, I'll try to be for the next, the next meeting, so. I shuffled my papers so much, I lost.
Well, poll participation. Before we close this discussion, I just want to make sure that we get this conference on, the conference that I told you about, because it is in January that we can consider that our next, we do have a meeting, so I don't forget.
Yes.
Because I don't, I didn't receive, but I get it.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, poll participation, sorry, poll participation as to any school district business, we are at five point zero one. This session will not exceed thirty minutes, if you have any comments with respect to any school district business, please step up to the podium, state your name and school affiliation, address your remarks to the board, each speaker will have three minutes to do so, pursuant to policy, as I said. Pursuant to policy, as I said, 12:30, 14:30, 40. Please refrain from discussing any individual student or any staff member. Not that we don't want you to speak, of course, but I thank you very much. Anybody? No, I see nobody coming up. Okay, I will close that portion of the meeting. Dr. Adams, you have any closing comments?
Just to reiterate what Irene said, Happy New Year, hope that everybody had a great holiday or holidays, and glad you're still here at 9:15 at night.
Yeah. It's not so bad with all the reports and what have you. Well, Clark, see? All right, you two are great. Teresa, second. All of your favorite, Amali, second.
Nice to see you.
All of your favorite, I'm seeing you.
Hi.
Audience is alive. It's got you great.